Before business, I have a date with my ten-year-old grandson.
Have fun.
Well, Father, first of all, I want to thank you for these public servants who often, without thanks and without recognition, serve their community and ask that you'll give them a sense of satisfaction in the work that they do for us. We pray that tonight you will grant them every virtue they need to lead well: integrity, patience, courage of conviction, openness to others' perspectives, teachability, and everything that would help them serve well the people of Winter Harbor. We ask that you'll bless their work. We commit it to you and trust that the result will be that this village will be a happier, safer, healthier, and prosperous place to live for everybody who calls it home. Thank you for listening and for what you're going to do through these of your servants. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, we need a motion to approve the August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one Redwood Board Meeting Minutes.
So.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call, please.
Harkin.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to Mayor's Report. I would like to ask Robert Jones, please come up to the front. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Robert Jones.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
A police officer for the village of Winter Harbor.
A police officer for the village of Winter Harbor.
In Lake County, Illinois.
In Lake County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a patrol officer.
The duties of a patrol officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Folks, Robert Jones comes from a long family tradition of law enforcement. His father was the chief of police of Gurnee and retired. Rob started his law enforcement, or went to police, worked there for about six years, left and switched his focus to the civilian security business for a number of years, about four years if I'm correct. Decided that he wanted to try his head again here in law enforcement, came to us in March of this year.
Yes.
Worked at Wood Forest part-time and proved himself worthy enough and showed a great interest in working for us full-time and dedicating the rest of his career to the village of Winter Harbor. And today, you see, he has now sworn in as a full-time police officer with us and be assigned to third shift at this time.
For the time being, third shift, yeah.
Well, we're very proud to have him. He comes with a great set of skills. I've worked him on a few calls myself as his supervisor and is very impressed with the way he handles himself in a number of different calls, rescue calls, domestics and such, and we're happy to have him and glad to work with him, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
And, uh, good folks.
I would ask John Lewis. Come up, John. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
John Lewis.
John Lewis.
Having been appointed to the office of deputy fire chief.
Having been appointed to the office of deputy chief.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Winter Harbor.
And the ordinances of the village of Winter Harbor.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Of deputy chief.
Of deputy chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
John comes to us from Zion where he put a thirty-year career in, moved through the ranks, and retired as a fire chief, and he lives here in the village. And the opportunity came to, uh, for John to help us out here at our part-time fire department on a part-time basis. And the value that he's going to bring to the village and to the fire department is exponential, and I have a lot to learn from him and looking forward to having progress with him and helping the fire department out. Uh, his wife's here, if you want to come put on his badge. You know. Or you can. We know where the ambulance is at. All right. Thank you.
I need a motion to adopt resolution appointing deputy chief, deputy fire chief John Lewis.
So move to second.
Any discussion? I have one thing. Chief Campanella, John Lewis was your boss, now you're his boss. Any problem with that?
He doesn't have a problem with that.
Well, we could say the both about Bill Beach's name, John Lewis. Both mentors, and now I get to tell them what to do.
I want to say that when I became mayor, we had a class, I guess you could say, with, uh, for, uh, in Zion regarding catastrophic things. Now, remember what was called?
Uh, NIMs.
NIMs, that's right. And John ran it, organized it, put it together, and it was very well, uh, it was a very good class, and I learned a lot. And I, I think you're going to do real well here, John.
Thank you. It's where I got my start.
Yep, I know. Thank you. Everything's full circle.
Everything is full circle.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion. Oh, I got a second. And now we need a roll call.
Yeah. Harkin.
I think I said man.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. We move on. Couple other things I want to bring up, uh, under Mayor's Report. I would like to thank Peter Rush with Edward Jones for the Seventh Street Music Series on Thursdays during the month of August. Peter coordinates everything, and the event was a great success. Uh, I know Public Works actually sets up the tables and the barriers and stuff, and I know Scott provides the, uh, the chairs for the seat back. But it was, uh, it was actually Peter Rush that pretty much, you know, makes sure they have their performers there, and it was outstanding. I actually saw a couple of videos from, uh, Gibi on Facebook, and it was well-attended by a lot of people, so thank you, Peter Rush. Second item, the HARPA funds. Now, what is HARPA? Stands for American Rescue Plan Act. We received our first check, which was for four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, and we'll get our second check sometime in September twenty-twenty-two for another four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. This is a federal grant. It's, uh, it's allowed only for four uses. Now, out of those four uses, there's really only two that are applicable for Winter Harbor. And, uh, one of them is impact fees for small businesses and non-for-profits and tourism, travel, and hospitality. And the other item is investing our sewer and water infrastructure. We are going to be setting up a vision session to discuss this at, at, probably a date coming up here, you know, in the near future. Uh, just wanted to let everyone know, the money needs to be spent by April, or by twenty-twenty-four. So we'll have something, we'll be able to figure out what to do, uh, once we have the vision session, what we're going to do with the money, so.
Is there a deadline for submitting the plan?
I'm sorry?
There's a deadline for submitting the plan of what we intend to do with the funds. Is that December?
No, the initial plan is due at the end of October, and then they want a more detailed plan by the end of December. But even that appears to be somewhat mutable. They understand that they rolled this money out quickly. They want to get it, it's a stimulus factor, so they want to get it circulating in the economy quickly.
Okay, thank you. Uh, third item, uh, this, uh, this Thursday, I will be attending the Kiwanis Club of Zion Vettan Annual Lead Jay Fisher Police and Firefighter Recognition. We have a firefighter and a police officer in the village of Winter Harbor will be recognized. The event's at the Zion Vettan Moose Family Center, five p.m. social, six p.m. opening comments, introduction firefighter, police honors, and a dinner policy award. So I just want to let everybody know I'll be, be going to that. And then last item, uh, regarding our village administrator position, we've, we've started compiling the resumes for six applicants, one being our interim village administrator, Robert Long. Putting together the interview team, and once in place, we'll call each of the board members and indicate how we are proceeding. And that's all I have. Move on to village administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, it's been a busy month, mostly about finances, and I'd rather than bore you about that, because it would be long in detail, frankly. Uh, what I'd like to do tonight is, if we can, work on our calendars, which mine just turned itself on, that's the nature of calendars. But I've been trying to set up this vision session for some Saturdays, and we haven't been able to find really a way to make it work. So what I would suggest is that we proceed with three committee meeting nights, and then one Saturday to wrap up. Our committee meeting nights, they'd be generally for the idea that staff members would be presenting and giving you things to think about, and then the Saturday session that follows it would be the wrap-up, where you guys get to integrate your thoughts, talk with each other, and tell us really what it is you want, the direction you want the village to go, and to kind of give us some thoughts about how, how you want to see it happen, and then we'll give you our ideas about, I'm sure we'll tell you whether or not we think they're somewhat realistic or high in the sky, but, uh, we'll do our best to try to integrate those into a final, a final work product and have a, a document to follow going forward. As you know, a lot of our, our codes were adopted, boy, a long time ago. Many of them are really good codes, were well-written back in the forties, fifties, sixties, and seventies. Some of them probably need to be updated and thought about, so there's a, there's a new world out there. So what I would suggest, if we, we could do it, is the next couple of Tuesdays, so we can get the twenty-eighth of September, the fifth, the twelfth of October is a planning and zoning board day, as is the, and the nineteenth of October is also a village board day. So maybe the twenty-eighth, the fifth, and the, uh, maybe the seventh and the thirteenth to try to get those, or excuse me, the twenty-eighth, fifth, and seventh, that's where I was trying to get to. I added an extra one in, and I think we only need three, and then we can follow that up with the Saturday, perhaps the twenty-third, if everybody's available by that point in time. Does that work for everyone?
I think we're twenty-third.
That would be the Saturday, if we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, looks good for me. By seven and twenty.
I don't know about for me, honestly, wait till I get home.
The twenty-eighth.
Sorry, but that's how it works.
The fifth, the seventh, and the twenty-third. Okay. So the twenty-eighth, fifth, and seventh, with the seven o'clock here, and the twenty-third, we'll figure out what we're going to do and where, and when, once we get a little closer to that date. Okay? And that way, if we have to move, we can do that.
Okay.
That's what I have. So thank you, Mayor.
All right, we move on to park correspondence. Move on to whole business, there is nothing on the agenda. So new business, committee reports, Administration and Community Development Committee, trustee Harkin.
Uh, make a motion to approve accounts payable warrant twenty-twenty-one-six in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, four hundred, four hundred and eighteen, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, eighty-five cents.
Got a motion, a second, discussion? I just want to let everyone know I want to do that, and it's a lot of money, four hundred and eighteen thousand, but out of that, three of them are loan payments. One was nine-one-one system, which is fifty-four thousand, one twenty-eight. Capital Projects is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, six twelve, and the sewer truck is forty-five thousand, five ninety-five, which comes out to two hundred and twenty-six thousand, three thirty-five. If we deduct that off of the four eighteen thou, four hundred and eighteen thousand, it's on a hundred and ninety-two thousand, one forty-nine. For transparency, I just want to let everyone know, if I'd be watching this video, that once these loans are paid up, and most of them are going to be paid up by the year twenty-twenty-five, that we won't be in debt. I mean, at least we won't be, have loans to pay, but just want to let everyone know that the majority of us warrant these loans, which is true for the month of July, August, and part of September, so. And that's all I have, I just wanted to bring that up. Anybody else have anything? Okay, roll call, please.
Harkin.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, make a motion to approve a resolution designating the auditing official establishing procedures for whistleblower complaints as presented.
Okay. Any discussion?
This is in response to a state update.
Right.
So we're just assigning, uh, in this case, our village administrator.
Awesome. All right. Any other discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Harkin.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Harkin. Move on to Public Safety Committee, trustee McCarthy.
Hey, uh, first I'd like to make a motion to waive the first and second reading, um, of the ordinance amending section one, three-three-point-zero-one of the municipal code of Winter Harbor as presented. And, um, do we need a whole reading of the ordinance amendment?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. So basically, yeah, it's presented in the taghead, outdated, and, um, ordinance doesn't really make, make sense, and, you know, someone asked, requested that we address it, and here we go.
For the public, can you speak to what's the?
Just, yeah, it is a, um, ordinance, uh, uh, outlawing cross-dressings within the village limits. And as mentioned, it's outdated, it's never really been enforced, it's not really enforceable, and it does present a basic civil rights issue, um, so it makes sense to, to get rid of it.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Harkin.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, and then I make a motion, um, that we adopt a resolution setting ambulancy.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, discussion on that?
Just, did you have anything to speak to with that? I mean, it's written, basically, we're bringing the ambulancy up to current with what our neighbors are doing.
And this is for insurance billing?
Yeah, so basically, it's what the insurance is, is paying, and then, um, we've also talked about, you know, having methods to reach, sure that if there is hardship, that people come and we can make exceptions to that. But yeah, basically, what, what we end up billing the insurance.
If you look at the majority of the calls, too, they come from certain areas, too. It's been a long time that we're going to do this. We didn't feel the need because we didn't want to impact people in town, elderly, and people that couldn't, but we get a lot of calls from certain areas, and it's about time that we, we're just trying to recruit what we do, and it's a way to do that, so.
Good. Anything? Chief?
No, it's been, uh, a while since they've been raised to the comparable rates, and, um, what things we want to do at the fire department, I think this will really help the, the future, and it's not coming out of, directly out of the taxpayers' wallets, it's coming from their insurance companies.
Okay, thank you. All right. Roll call?
Harkin.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I make mostly approve recommendation to terminate, um, the contract with Andres and add to a new agreement with Paramedic Billing Services effective November first, twenty-twenty-one, um, which would be our, our billing system that we've been using, um, so, oh, sorry.
We need a second.
Yeah, give a second.
Second. All right.
Uh, so the billing system, uh, it's a better deal, better rate, um, that they can provide for us for our billing services. Did you have anything to add?
Correct, the current provider, Andres, is about, is seven percent, and we can get probably five-point-two-five percent at least, and they're willing to negotiate with us more after we sign with them. Um, and they provide a couple of their services that we could probably use with the purchase of an ambulance down the road if we want, um, through this company. Uh, they're a co-company of Metro who does our staffing for our full-time medics.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's a sister company, uh, and Andres, I can't complain too much about them, because they just wouldn't come down in their rates, and, uh, every percentage point helps, so.
I appreciate the chief's work in, um, looking into this, as well as the ambulance rates, you know, looking to find, you know, how we can, um, address, you know, these are, you know, drops in the bucket, but the drops add up, you know, and help us, um, you know, significantly, so appreciate the work he's done of that, and he really spent a good amount of time with myself and trustee White, you know, talking about it and explaining what he's been looking into, so really appreciate all the work he's been doing to help with this.
It's going to be a win-win for the village.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right, roll call?
Harkin.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I make a motion to ratify the retainer with Odison Denalfo Hattonbaugh and Castaldo Limited for fire department lawsuit defense.
Second. You, you pronounce those very good.
Yeah, I didn't know if that's a real offer or if that's who, you know.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay. Unless there are any questions? Yeah. Okay, roll call, please.
Harkin.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make motion to accept a notice of state board for a grant from IDOT for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two step grant. We're up to twenty-four thousand, six times seventy-three dollars, I'm guessing, and twenty cents in weight transfer.
Twelve cents.
Twelve cents.
I didn't do it.
I wasn't.
I didn't do it in this time.
Twelve cents.
Twelve cents.
A point two. Twenty-four thousand, six times seventy-three dollars and twelve cents in weight transfer.
Second. Okay, discussion on that? All right, roll call.
Harkin.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And finally, make a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with Flock Group for access to the Flock services.
Second. Discussion. I had to look this up.
Yeah.
I didn't know what Flock service was.
Costs us nothing, so I gave us access to these services.
Uh, Mr. Shidi, uh, do we presently have this, or is this?
We, we do not. Uh, so our neighbor in community Zion has just installed about twenty-four cameras throughout their jurisdiction.
Okay.
Uh, this, by, part of the agreement when the company comes in and installs license plate cameras, um, the jurisdiction agreed to share that information with other customers. Uh, so through this memorandum, we can get access to that data. Uh, for example, we had a theft last week, happened in the middle of the night, uh, we don't know if the, the offending vehicle went north or south on Turner Road. If they'd gone south through Zion, we'd be able to pull all the license plates that went down Turner Road for a certain time and be able to narrow down our targets for investigation. So it's, it's a new technology in the area, it's something that we're interested in looking at and seeing the benefits, you know, our investigations, and it is something that we could look at installing here in Winter Harbor in the future as well.
Now, they install cameras along the roadways.
Correct. Yeah, the cameras just simply read license plate numbers and log that information. So is it, is there anything we give, like, we're giving in return for this? No. So is it basically, kind of, we're there, ask us to use it, and in the long term, there's some benefit they'll get out of that? I'm not sure, you know, kind of what they get.
They know what type of, where you live, who's coming where, it's, it's just like a tracking device, like they do with our phones, our credit cards, anything else we use. It's, it's a way for them to know who comes and does what, who's spending money, or what, where our car is coming from. Where do people go to work from? Do they come from Wisconsin to go this way? Do they, it's just a tra, it's like the stores used to do when you went in there, use your credit card, and then they sell your information.
So they're getting data collection out of it, so, okay. So that's what I'm asking, because obviously, there's some sort of, they have to be making money somehow doing that, so that's the trade-off. So the, the company that installs the cameras charges twenty-five hundred dollars per camera per year to the jurisdiction that has them, so in this case, Zion is paying that on all their cameras. But by entering the S M U, other agencies can get access to that data at no cost.
So the cameras that they install in our village, are we going to be paying for those?
If we were to do that in the future, I, at this point, we don't see a reason to do that. Okay. So we're not getting access, we're not getting the cameras here, we're getting access to the information. Correct. We're just getting access to the. So someone is traveling from here into Zion, something like that, and we need to, to be able to track that, is that? Yeah, it gives us an opportunity, like I said, with the theft that we had the other night.
Okay. Now, does Zion have it, does, do they have it to the north?
Pleasantburg is not, no, it's not.
Okay.
This is purely their own cameras that they install. This isn't a accessing ring camera, it's a, it's purely Flock's cameras.
Yeah, correct.
Well, cool technology, before they take them next. All right, any other questions? All right, Rockoff?
Harkett.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee McCarthy, and thank you, Mike Shidi. Move on to Public Works and Parks Committee, trustee Mirabella.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village Way Department and the Holland Way Department of Transportation for maintenance of traffic signals on state highways.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Just they maintain...
Yeah.
The road.
Okay, all right, Rockoff, please.
Harkett.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to public comments. We just, if you'd like to address the boards, come up to the podium and state your name and your address. All right.
First time in a long time.
All right, so we move on to unfinished business. I have my tab waiting just in case someone came up. So we move on to unfinished business, I'll start down with trustee Mirabella.
All right, so Tim's left us a few things that we're doing with Public Works, so kind of, we got their project to replace all the street lighting fixtures, the LED...
That they own, I didn't put that on there. Only the ones that they own.
Not like some of the ones we own, or the different lights that we have to maintain.
You say they're, you're gonna be replacing them?
They have started that project.
Yeah, they look great in what they put in.
They have started, they're actually in the park today, replacing the five, the five poles that Comet owns in the park.
Okay.
And then they've, they've been around the community, that they're working their way around.
Just the Comet poles?
Just the Comet poles.
And how many poles did the place Comet...
They own, I have, four hundred or so.
Okay.
By the way, I don't know if you noticed, but Comet and AT&T own those poles. They share the cost of those poles, I found out, when the two poles had snapped on Stip Street, the supervisor said, well, it's AT&T's responsibility, the pole that'll pull out, so, but they did replace those lights.
They're power poles, they're not telephone poles. If you ask any electrician, they're power poles, they're not telephone poles.
Yeah.
Because ours is on the top.
So the four hundred, they're gonna do, so then...
We have, I don't remember the exact number, two hundred or so that we own.
We're gonna find you do those at some point, or...
Pardon me?
We're gonna find you do those at some point?
I have a plan ready to go, as long as you've got the money to get it done.
Yes.
We are absolutely ready.
Just asking.
Yep, no, absolutely. It's a good project. We got a grant, you know, two years ago, if you remember, and completed all the patents of the vision.
Right.
You know, so we're ready to do it, and I think that's gonna be the best option, you know.
Our performance?
No, water and sewer.
I know.
We have a lot of water and sewer that four hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars ago.
Yeah, okay, very good. Anything else, trustee...
Next item of the twenty-twenty-one row project that we were doing should start in a couple of weeks. Twenty-twenty-one patching program should start next week. We discussed this in earlier meetings, we got certain areas, and we've listed what we're doing and what we could afford to do. His, Tim's favorite thing, brush pickup starts pretty soon in the month of October. Mind you, I hope all of those people are patient, we are down two guys, it's gonna take quite a bit out of them, it's gonna take more than one day, so...
It's gonna take three or four days every week in October.
It's gonna take quite a while.
So we'll have one or two days to do anything else.
But I like it, one, I know my guys don't like it, but I like it, I think it's a good thing for the village. I know it takes out of our time to do more important things, but I think the branch pickup is sometimes important, because when I used to live out where I live, it wasn't so important to me, now it is, because I'm in more of a tighter area, and it's, it's just harder to legally, you're not burning leaves, but if you try to burn limbs, you can only have a fire so big, you gotta wa, I mean, it just makes it harder for people at disposal. I get, you get paid to get it done, but I think it's a nice...
There it is. The answer to this is probably no because of liability, but it, I mean, is there any interest or ability to ask for volunteers in the community that have pickups to haul branches to Public Works?
They couldn't do it with our vehicles.
With their time allowed.
I mean, if they haul them out there, let's say that's the policy that you wanted to set, if they haul them out there, still gonna take us two or three days to chip it off. It's the same amount that we have to chip.
Sure. And you can just control when it, when it happens, then.
It's just bold, where it would be the same amount of time, because...
Right.
The time it takes for them to drive to one spot or the other, it isn't that much, it's when they gotta stop, pick it up, which they can be doing.
When you're spending twenty-four hours a week out of a forty-hour work week, three days, you know, it is what it is, you know, and that's where the patience is gonna have to come in.
Yeah.
If we want to continue this program.
Yeah.
It, it just, it's the reality, it's the unfortunate reality, that we're only gonna have one or two days to do anything else in the month of October. And that includes, you know, the water routes, water service requests, you know, that we get, what, you see, thirty-something a month?
Hopefully, you won't allow for any water main breaks for next month.
I'm not... You know, but that, that's just where the unfortunate part's gonna be. Being this many guys down, the staff just isn't there.
And we're gonna, to that effect, I've had discussions with the mayor, so as soon as we solve our village administrator problem, we are going to replace the person, not sooner or we're gonna try to get that second person replaced. I know it's tough, but everybody's been doing their part, and I can't get the, we're working at that, so. Takes the community to make something happen, and we're doing pretty good over there. I know the guys are tired, but they've been doing a great job with the limited amount of resources we have.
Right.
Thank God it's not the fall season, so that's what we'll really see, if this winter's gonna be as bad as it should. So moving on, just a little bit, a lot of it will probably expand more on stuff, but fall ball for the parks, fall ball started, the kids are playing fall ball, sure basketball science starting starts soon, we got a trick-or-treat event coming up, hope people can attend that. Stride safe, people are at school, schools, season is starting, full board, we're back at school, I love it. Hopefully, we have no more shutdowns, that's all I got.
I have a couple of questions for Tim. Applications for your guy, I mean, I'm...
We reviewed the applications, we've set up the first stage of interviews for this week.
Okay.
And hopefully, I think, Bob, the timeline was next week to do the second interview, and hopefully have an offer ready to go right away. We're trying to move this as fast as we can.
Right.
You know, to get at least one guy in, but move along, we didn't get as many applications as we thought we would.
Okay.
Got eight, six qualified.
Okay.
You know, so...
Awesome. And then J.R. Park, Thompson, and Landon?
Happy to say, we're getting ready.
Be with us in the next couple of meetings?
Yep, we just signed a contract with Chicago Land and Paving.
Right.
Set up a pre-con meeting, we've already started marking out the curves that have to be replaced out there and on Landon, we can't hit Landon, we got two blocks doing over there.
Right.
But we, we are gonna get that, we're actually gonna finally see construction begin here in the next few weeks.
Awesome.
Thank God.
Yep.
It definitely needs it.
We're all with September first, it's like Halloween, so...
Yeah, we're, we're still, still on target, unfinished by, by Halloween, so, you know, by the time we get all those pedestrians in the street for Halloween, we should be good to go, and done.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, trustee Levin.
All I got is congratulations to deputy chief Lewis, glad to see him back.
Yep.
And congratulations to officer Jones.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Weiss?
Thank you. Congratulations to deputy chief Lewis, that's a great asset to have, that experience to come into Winter Harbor. Also, I want to thank Tim and the Public Works, we had a power outage August thirtieth where a huge limb brought down the utilities on the lines on the power poles, and the, I guess, the head alarm call person...
Pardon me?
Had to drive the end loader to help remove part of that huge branch that came down and took the power poles, and he did a fantastic job after Comet cut it, cut it up, and then a day or two later, Public Works came and cleaned up all those branches, those three guys, I tell you, they, they did a phenomenal job, and I knew you were down, down one guy at the time, and I said, you know, and I told the other people, I said, you know, with the amount of people that they have, only three, and then you've got this whole territory to take care of, they do a phenomenal job with the staff that they have and what they got to do, so, thank you, Tim.
They do, they do a good job.
And, you know, and good thanks to the staff for that, because they're sure they did a phenomenal job that day, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, trustee Weiss. Trustee Harkett?
Levin. Trustee McCarthy? So first, I want to make sure we mention the blood drive this Saturday, September twenty-fifth. What are the times on it?
Eight AM to two PM.
So eight AM to two PM, so anyone that can give and spread the word, you know...
Like if I'm here, then he...
Say it again?
We've only got seven people signed up, and we need like twenty-five, so anybody willing, Neil, please come by.
So, yeah, you know, so if you can make it, or just, you know, spread the word, let